Okay, and if you want to try sharing it.
Okay, you ready for that?
Yep.
Here we go. You have the page open, Andrew?
Yep. Yes, I do, sir.
Yeah, just said live stream is happening.
Facebook, yep. Fun.
Really?
Yep.
I just don't know where you're streaming it to, Vic.
What's that?
I don't know where you're streaming it to, though.
If you see it yet, so.
No.
You might now, hold on.
There we go.
I can see it. I can see it, I can see all of you. Now I'm going to share the screen.
You want to, because Vic, you could share from there. We're just trying to get the, the meeting streamed on, on Facebook. For everybody's advantage, benefit. And. There we go.
All right, how's it looking on a Facebook page?
Page?
It's not.
Because I didn't, I, I just published it there.
No, no, now we, now we have Vic's screen on the screen.
Yeah, we're seeing Vic's screen.
We, we got Vic's computers on meeting now.
Hey, hey, Vic, we've got everything you've looked at.
It's on there.
That's a lot of apps open on the bottom there.
I'm moving this around, you, you see this?
It's under the nicer Columbus at Facebook.
Yeah. We see. You gotta stop sharing your screen. And. Now he's still sharing his screen.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop.
Yeah. The computers on me. There you go.
All right, how about now?
All right.
Yeah, I got my screen back.
There we go. All right.
All right.
I want to thank everybody for their patience. It is 7:33. We are going to get started with this meeting tonight. We were just trying to get the Zoom information or streamed live to Facebook, which is. Not sure if it's exactly working or not, but. Let us get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I would like to welcome you to our Village of Woodbury Board Meeting for January 13th, 2022. I would like to ask everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. And a moment of silence for the 17 lives lost, including eight children. In that tragic fire in the Bronx this past weekend. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Alrighty. We're going to jump right in. First order of business is to fill the vacancy to the village board created by my election as mayor. This term will want run from December 31st, 20, will run till December 31st, 2022. At this time, I would like to propose the name of Vic Forelli to fill that position. So can I have a motion and a second from the board? To appoint Vic to that position?
Make the motion.
Jesus makes the motion, Tara seconds it. All those in favor? And the opposed? So be it. Vic, welcome to the Village of Woodbury Board.
Thank you.
Don't make us regret this.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Moving right along. The next order of business is the administering of all oath of office for trustees, Buick, Forelli, and Graziano. And myself is visit the village mayor by village clerk, Desiree Potvin. So we're going to do this individually. Clerk Potvin, the floor is yours. And I guess we're going to do this with Buick first.
We're going to do it alphabetically as well as individual. So we're going to go and do trustee Buick first. So if you can just raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
You.
You're welcome. Okay, next up is trustee Graziano. We'll do trustee Graziano since you were elected, and then we'll do trustee Forelli since he was appointed. How's that sound?
F G's, though, what is the difference?
I'm just glad that there's another letter besides a G going on here. Okay, trustee Graziano, you ready? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, newly appointed trustee Forelli, it's your turn. Please really use your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okey dokey, Mayor Giacamazza, your turn. And you said I say it right now, so.
Yes, you do.
Okay. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
While faithfully discharging the duties of.
While faithfully discharging the duties of.
Village mayor.
Village mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, all four of you do need to stop and sign the book before January 30th, except for Vic, you have until February 12th.
All righty, thank you, Desiree.
Thank you.
All right, now that the oath of office is taken care of, and before we begin the mid-year reorg, I would just like to allow the public to comment on any agenda items. Thank you, thank you. Comment on any agenda items only. So if there's anybody that wants to comment on anything on the agenda, please do so. Anyone? All righty. We're going to move right along then. To everybody's favorite part of the meeting.
Andrew, Andrew, there's a hand up.
Okay, hold on. I did not see that.
As Sev.
Oh, Zev, go ahead. No?
Hi, can you hear me?
How are you, sir?
Good, good evening. My name is Zev Wiesenfeld, the chairman of the UGC of Woodbury. Would just like to take this opportunity to congratulate and express our warm wishes to our esteemed. Mayor for his ascension to this well deserved position, with which we wish him much success. As his success is ultimately our success. I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate this fellow trustee members on their reelection. We look forward to working with you all. For the betterment of all the.
And we, we lost you there towards the end, but thank you. Thank you for your kind words and thank you for your kind sentiments. So anyone else on gender items only? Okay. I'm going to move right along to the mid-year reorg. So first order of business, and it gives me great pleasure to do this, I am. Appointing as my deputy mayor. Trustee Jesus Gomez. So congratulations, Jesus, and thank you for all you've done for me over the course of the years. It's, it's just well deserved. So moving right along. Motion. I need a motion in a second to appoint the following or establish the following liaisons of the village board. Liaison to the town board, Mayor Giacamazza and trustee Gomez. Liaison to the planning board. Trustee Gomez and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the zoning board, trustee Buick and trustee Forelli. Liaison to the fire department. Trustee Buick and trustee Gomez. Liaison to the water sewer department, trustee Gomez and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the building department, trustee Forelli and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the highway department, trustee Buick and trustee Forelli. Can I have a motion to accept in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Buick with the motion. Second. Jesus, trustee Graziano, the second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, okay, I need a motion in a second to point the following individuals to the following positions. Appeal officer for foils, Andrew Giacamazza. Village clerk, treasurer, and registrar, Desiree Potvin. Procurement officer, mayor, Andrew Giacamazza. Can I have a motion to accept in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And trustee Buick with the motion, trustee Forelli with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried. Okay, moving right along. All right, I need a motion in a second to designate Kelly Norton with the law from Burke. Neil Golden Norton to as attorney for the village of Woodbury.
The motion.
Jesus Gomez with the motion, trustee Buick with the second, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So be it, all right, moving right along. I need a motion in, in a second to adopt the following. Meeting procedures that were presented to the board prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to accept that in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by, motion by trustee Buick, seconded by trustee Forelli. All those in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Okay, motion in a second, I need to adopt the following procedures. To be followed during the public comment period as presented. Do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Graziano, do I have a second, please? By trustee Gomez, all in favor? Opposed? All righty. Um. Okay. We're right along, procurement policy. I need a motion in second. To adopt the procurement policy as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Moving right along. I don't bear with me. That one was a long one. Seems to go on forever. Okay. I need a motion in, in a second to approve the below undertaking. To adopt the below form. Of the official undertaking of municipal officers of the village pursuant to section 11 of the public offices law. Do I have that motion? By Gomez, trustee Gomez, seconded by trustee Buick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Village clerk, Desiree Potvin, did I miss anybody? Did I miss anything on the reorg?
You did not, you did a great job.
All right, thank you, my dear. Gold star for me. Okay. Moving on to administrative business. I need a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the meeting held on December 23rd, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All righty. Motion and a second to approve the abstract, to approve the abstract 14 containing vouchers. Two, one, one, two. Two, five, dash, two, one, one, three, six, one. Two, two, and totaling $232,396.26.
I'll make the motion.
And trustee Buick with the motion, do I have a second, please? Trustee Gomez with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so carried. Okay, I need a motion and a second to appoint Michael Postel to the vacancy on the planning board with the term to expire. On May 31st, 2026.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, do I have a second?
A second?
Second by Victor Forelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I abstained.
Good job, okay. Okay, readvertise for letters of interest for zoning board vacancy. So in 2021, the village of Woodbury. Did conduct interviews for the village, for the zoning board of appeals. We are going to re-interview those two individuals and open it back up to see if there's anybody else interested. So at this time, I'd like a motion in a second to authorize the village clerk to advertise for letters of interest from residents of Woodbury. In serving on the zoning board of appeals. Letters are due by 4:00 PM on February 4th, 2022. So where I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
And I forgot. By trustee Gomez and a second by Victor Forelli, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, we are also going to have to schedule a. Date and time to conduct these interviews, so I am thinking about doing this on February 8th. That is the Tuesday prior to our meeting. Which would be. I had it written down here, it would be the 10th. So. Tuesday night, February 8th, say maybe 7:00 PM. To begin the process, we're going to re-interview two and then whatever other applications come in. So first off. A village clerk poppin', does that give you enough time to contact everybody if they do on the 4th?
Sure, I can contact people as they come in, I just need to know how many minutes for each interview you want me to set up.
Okay, is 15 minutes sufficient for the board per interview? Perfect. Not, not that I expect this large swath of people to be applying for the ZBA opening, but. One can only hope and pray. So 15 minute increments, February 8th works for everybody and does. 7:00 PM work for everybody to begin?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion and a second to schedule. Interviews for the zoning board of appeals opening for February 8th, 7:00 PM to begin with those interviews.
Virtually, correct?
Virtually, yes.
Virtually.
Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
All right. And seconded by trustee Buick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving right along. Okay, fire department equipment requests. So I need a motion and a second to approve fire department equipment request. 2022 dash 01 totaling approximately $3,568 for the purchase of 20 gloves and three batteries for the Hearst tool.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Buick, do I have a second? Trustee Graziano with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? Very good. All right. We are going to table, the next item on the agenda for this evening was the appointment of a billing control clerk for the water sewer department. So that will be tabled to our meeting of January 27th. Okay? And that conducts, oh, that conducts administrative business. Is there anything from the board on old business that they would like to discuss? All right, if not, we're going to move right along to new business. And fire department membership update. So I need a motion and a second to change the status of the following individuals to active, from active to not, to inactive. Effective December 31st, 2021. Per Chief Burke, Pisquale Prizillo, Ken Begbie, George Suet, Alex Sanchez, and Lenny Lucane. Do I have a motion and a second to accept those changes?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Gomez, was that trustee Gomez? Or Graziano?
Graziano.
Graziano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and, and I just want to say on a personal note. You never want to lose volunteers, especially ones who have done as much as. Chief Pat Prizillo has done for the Woodbury Fire Department. He was a 9/11 first responder working with the NY, NYFD. Who brought his training and years of knowledge. To Woodbury Fire Department and instructed a generation of fire department volunteers on proper safety protocol and procedures. Pat has also served countless years as fire chief, maybe the longest serving chief in Woodbury's history. So on behalf of the village of Woodbury, we thank Pat for his many years of dedicated service to our community. And I just can't call you Pisquale, just is not working for me after all these years. So thank you, Pat, for all you've done for the village of Woodbury. And for your, all your years of dedicated service to our community, so thank you. Moving right along. Okay. Return of bonds. Correspondence has been received from engineer Natalie Barber regarding bonds that were posted relating to the village of Curious Joe Ridge Road Restoration Bond. And the village of Curious Joel Treatment Facility Restoration Bond. She is recommending that we. That we return, since the, return this, those bonds, since the work has been completed to their satisfaction. Correspondence has also been received from attorney Kelly Norton stating she has reviewed the documentation. Provided by engineer Natalie Barber and agrees is appropriate this time to return. To return the bonds, so I need a motion in a second to return. To prove the return of bonds that were posted by the village of Curious Joel. So can I get that motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I have a second. Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Buick with second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving right along. Approve surplus equipment and authorize auction. So I need a motion in, in a second to declare the following items of equipment as surplus. And authorize the village clerk to have them placed for sale at auction. We have a 2014 Dodge Durango through the building department. We have a 1990's Hinnaker. And a 1990's Henderson Sander. From the highway department. And then I have a 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe. That is currently with fire department. So I have a motion and a second. To prove them as surplus. And have the village clerk work her magic to get us some much needed funds.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
There you go. Do I have a second, please? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. All right, I need a motion accept in a second to adopt the following resolution to releve a pro-rated tax amount due on property located at various locations. That were previously eligible for an exemption. Do I have that, do I have a motion on that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Do you want to take that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right. That concludes regular business from my first meeting ever. So. Right now, I would like to open it up to public comment. So if you could, I, Zoom has a hand option, if you could raise it, because we have a lot of people on here. So if you wish to speak. Please do so. And I do not see anything. All righty. Moving right along. So at this time, I will go to department head comments, department comments, and I'll start with. Rob Wyatt.
I just wanted to wish all those elected, re-elected, and now appointed to their new seats, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Rob. Michael Pinella. From our building.
Good evening. Good evening, I just want to echo what Rob said. Once again, congratulations to all the trustees and mayor. I look forward to working with trustee Ferriello, Ferrielli, excuse me, and Graziano. As liaisons to the building department. And thank you very much.
I, I got to ask, just, just on a side, Mike, how could somebody of Italian descent? Screw that name up. I, I just don't. I'm not getting it, Michael. Anyway.
Well, good.
All right, moving right along, and Mickey Phillips.
But congratulations to all you guys, and I got nothing else.
He's a man of few words, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Moving on to, actually, you know what? Village clerk, Desiree Potvin, you have anything?
Uh, no, I've congratulated you guys all a couple of meetings ago when you won your election. I congratulated Vic when I met with him last week to go over paperwork and provide him with some research material. I have to tell you, this is no knock to anybody currently on the board. That was the first time in my 22 years that I had an incoming board member ask me to send him three months worth of minutes so he can review them before the first meeting. I was impressed with that, I think that's great, and I just want to let you know also that supervisor Burke was at your meeting, but he had to leave for a personal issue.
Okay. All right, that's great, that's fine. But I, I will just add this about trustee Forelli. That most of the rest of us know how to log into YouTube and then watch meetings online. Must get in the way.
It's easy to go through the minutes.
Yeah.
I, I just go on the website and I download them.
Yeah.
Knocking him, I mean, he, he made an effort.
Did he? I just want to say this, did he ask for the minutes on stone tablets by chance?
Yeah, I sat there all weekend knocking it out.
I just want to make sure, all right. Board comments, and we'll start at the end of the table, if we were at Village Hall with trustee Graziano.
Did, did you miss Mr. Burke?
He, did he come back in?
Yes.
No, he had, he had texted me.
Our fire chief, the fire chief.
Actually calling me right now.
There he is. All right.
I'm up here, yeah, no, just congratulations. To everybody and look forward to working again with you guys, so. That's it for now.
And the reason why I skipped, I skipped Chief Burke was because he lives near me, and I guess his wife is starting to believe that. Everywhere he move, I move, he moves. So it's probably better than I have as much communication with trustee, with chief.
Don't Freudian, Freudian slip there, mayor, don't, don't ever say that.
Well, listen.
I can say it.
Okay. It's okay.
Mayor Giacamazza?
Yes.
I have supervisor Burke on the phone, he just wants to congratulate Vic Forelli on his appointment.
Okay.
And he says he looks forward to working with all five of you in the 2022.
We do as well, we do as well, so thank, thank him for that.
Okay, thanks.
There you go. All right, moving right on now, we'll go to board member comments. Starting with trustee Graziano.
All right, thank you everybody for coming tonight. Appreciate it, I'd like to thank everybody for re-electing, myself and Tara and Andrew. I take that very seriously, my responsibility to. I take that very seriously, my responsibility to the citizens of this village. So, I will continue to give you 100% of what I have every day to make sure we give you the best government you can possibly get. Secondly, I'd like to also thank Mickey and the crew from the water department fixing that main break the other night. I have many of a fond memory of being out in the five-degree cold weather, digging a water main break and my beard freezing and cracking off as you're working outside. So, I really understand what you went through. So, I thank you guys for your dedication and I know it's not easy. So, great job, and thank you for that. Back to something that Mayor Jacamoza mentioned a little bit ago. I would hope that we get a good amount of applicants for a ZBA. I'd like to try and hopefully, you know, as we've charted a new path forward and, you know, starting new in Woodbury and working on a new set of years here, I'm hoping we get some more public participation in things and working together. And maybe we get some more volunteers for certain things and putting their name in the hat. Village government and town governments and all local governments, to be honest with you, work best with great participation. So, the more people we can get to participate, the more variant of opinion we can get and the better it is for all citizens of Woodbury. So, I'm hoping that everybody comes out and volunteers for that. I'd also like to congratulate you, Desiree, again, for your win as town clerk and glad we're able to continue to keep you and your knowledge as village clerk. We're going to lean heavily on you again, as we always do every year. So, especially when I want to do things that we're not supposed to do in government, but because I like, I'm a private guy, private corporation guy, so. We'll keep moving it from there. So, but I like to thank everybody for that and want to get everybody to keep safe. I realize that they, you know, the variant has kind of gone out there and gone wild a little bit. So, just everybody try and keep safe. Do your best you can. And let's hope we get to be, see each other in person as soon as possible. Hopefully, this thing burns out as fast as it rolls up. So, again, congratulations, everybody. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Gomez.
Well, thank you all for coming out to a Zoom meeting. I want to congratulate and welcome Vic to his appointment on our board. And I also want to congratulate all our returning board members. And congratulations again, Andrew, for the appointment as mayor and for appointing me as the deputy mayor. You could have gave it out to someone else. I thank you though. Thank you so much. And I mean, I missed the town board meeting last week because that was the way our vacations are going. Congratulations also to that side of the boards on their return and those that won and the returning ones. I just want to take a moment to say that my family and I are currently isolating. Maybe you can tell by the sound of my voice, thanks to COVID. Returning back from Florida, it gave me a little extra gift coming back. So, even though we are all in my family are fully vaccinated and boosted, yet we all got it. So, I have to say, though, that it did do his job, the vaccine and the boost. Because, I mean, we're all sick, but not severely where we need to go to the hospital. So, at least I can say that getting the vaccine, the boost did keep up with what it was supposed to and keep us out of having severe symptoms. I mean, I'm not saying that anyone should go and get it, get vaccinated and boosted. I just want to share my experience for those who are, you know, on the fence about getting it or not. Whether it's a bad experience, it did its job. So, it's up to you whether you decide you want to or not. I want to say thank you to all our all our department heads. As you can tell, I'm a little off. So, thank you all. Did a great job, especially with the water main break and then the snow that came by. Thanks, Rob, again. I know it's coming down the pike on Friday and Sunday also. So, we know we can count on you always. Thank you. Thank you all. Have a great night. God bless and stay safe, please.
Thank you, trustee Gomez. Trustee Buick.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, everyone, for attending. First, I want to start by welcoming trustee Forelli to the board. I think you are an excellent addition to our village government, and the people of Woodbury are very lucky to have you serving them. I'm looking forward to working with you on future projects. Second, I'm going to wish Mayor Jacamoza the best of luck in his new role as mayor. I think we're all hard-pressed to find someone who rivals your work ethic and dedication to everything you do. It's an honor to serve with you on the board, under your leadership, and know that you will always keep the best interest of the residents of Woodbury at the top of every decision that is made. I know you have already hit the ground running these last few weeks with working and just digging in, and it's been a lot of work for you. But as I knew you would, you rolled up your sleeves and got rights dealing with the many issues we're facing. I think you're going to do great things for the residents of this village, and I am grateful to be working alongside you on this journey. Last, I want to congratulate the members of the town board who were sworn in last week. Supervisor Burke, councilwoman Luciani, and councilman Finnegan. I am truly excited for what these boards are going to accomplish together. The phrase "stronger together" has never been more true. The town and the village working in unison for the benefit of our community is the only thing that really matters. So, under the leadership of supervisor Burke and Mayor Jacamoza, I know that Woodbury will continue to grow, prosper, and move in a positive direction. Also, congratulations, Desiree, again, on your another term as town clerk and also for working with us again on the village. You do always do such a great job, and you keep us educated and informed, and I appreciate that. So, thank you. And as a resident of Woodbury, I want to thank both supervisor Burke and Mayor Jacamoza for putting the residents first and for working together for a brighter tomorrow. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening and stay safe.
And was there any doubt why she's my favorite trustee? Just want to put that out there.
Come on, you got to say that publicly?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, trustee Buick. Trustee Forelli with your first board comments.
Alright. First of all, I want to thank you, Andrew, or congratulate you, Andrew, for your election as mayor and for trustee Graziano and trustee Buick for their reelection as trustees. Congratulations. And also to Desiree for her reappointment as village clerk. I do want to extend my gratitude to Mayor Jacamoza and the village board for having the confidence in my abilities to appoint me to the village trustee position. I'm honored to be working with all of you and to be able to serve the residents of Woodbury. I'm actually looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to meeting with the department heads. Hope to meet with all of them before the next meeting. Some of them I know, some of them I don't. So, I want to get a relationship going. I also want to thank the, or congratulate the town board for the election to their position, and I'm looking forward to working with them. I think together, we can all do great things, and that's what I'm looking forward to, what I'm most excited about. And that's, those are my comments.
You, sir. And we're going to have to talk about that beard. So, we may have to create code.
Who are we, the Yankees?
Alright, thank you, trustee Forelli. So, let me begin by welcoming to the village of Woodbury extended family Cody Lane Hand. Mom Sarah and dad John Hand are doing fine. And so are the new grandma and grandpa Patricia Hand and John Hand Senior. So, on behalf of the village board, we would like to congratulate them on their newest addition. Week after week, you will hear the board sing the praises of Rob Wyatt and his highway department. Yes, those accolades are well-deserved. While Rob Wyatt soaks in the adulation, Mickey Phillips from Michael Phillips and his merry band of men just go about their business. That is why it gives me great pleasure this evening to heap some praise on our water department. This past weekend, on the coldest night in Woodbury in almost two years, our water department jumped into action to repair a water main break in Valley Forge. Working in frigid temperatures through the night and into the next day, they were able to restore service to our residents. I also want to thank our residents for their kind words they shared on social media about our hard-working water personnel and for their patience during the repair work. Village attorney Kelly Norton is not here tonight, but she has instructed me that I am under a legal obligation to say this. Rob Wyatt and his highway department are doing an amazing job. Okay? Moving right along. So, when I was a young man attending the State University College of Boniata, I had the bright idea to pledge a paternity. Not one of my, not one of my better ideas. During my six weeks of torture and belittlement, I learned the principles of the order. One of those principles was a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. A chain is just a series of links joined together to form a task. Here in Woodbury, that chain and those links that all changed on January 1. We now have put that much, now, we really haven't put that much information out there nor photo ops on how supervisor Burke and myself have been working together. But I just wanted to share a few details. So, this morning, I attended a press conference hosted by Senator James Scoofus announcing the awarding of a grant that we plan on using for Valley Avenue and for other smaller projects throughout Woodbury. I invited supervisor Burke, along with former mayor Egan, to join me and asked them both to speak on behalf of this project. This project is going to be the first of many that the village and the town will be working on jointly for our residents. Yesterday, I attended a meeting about the ongoing pool project with all my department heads. It is supervisor's Burke goal to have that pool open by Memorial Day. It is this board's goal to assist the supervisor and his board in making that a reality for department head, make that a reality for our residents. At the end of this month, we'll also be hosting our first joint village and town department head meetings. Besides those initiatives, we've jointly been working with the county to obtain COVID test kits distributed to our residents. We've been working on a joint newsletter to better communicate with our residents and really so much more. This spirit of cooperation not only benefits our two boards, but more importantly, our residents. Like that chain, so many, so much can be accomplished when each link is working together towards a common goal. On behalf of my board, I just want to thank supervisor Tommy Burke, or Thomas Burke, councilman Tyler Edsall, councilman Tim Finnegan, and councilwoman Kate Luciani for embracing this spirit of cooperation. For the three newly-elected board members of the town, campaign promises were made and campaign promises have been kept to date by working with our board for our residents. Just a few more thank yous, and I promise I'm done talking. This type of local government transition is never easy, but they are made easier when you are thankfully surrounded by good people. So, to my department heads, my felt, my village trustees, residents, our consultants, our clerks, especially the state clerk of the year, Desiree Podman, and to my family and my lovely bride Shannon, who have endured me running out the door for various meetings and water main breaks and phone calls. I thank you. So, that is it. If there be no further business to attend to, I would entertain a motion and a second to close this meeting.
Make that motion.
Alright, trustee Gomez with the motion, trustee Buick with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good night, and thank you for joining us.
Not at all.
Good night.